Got it, except we're gonna.
If you guys started the meeting, I can't hear you, you're on mute.
Thank you, Ryan, I was just actually.
Now you got feedback.
Hold on, hold on. I was just going to, can you hear me now? Yeah, so I'm just gonna ask to make sure that the voices were coming out correctly. So if you could say something, I'd appreciate it. Can you speak again, Ryan, please?
Yep, I hear you loud and clear, testing one, two, three.
Thank you, and Chairman, can we do?
Okay, yeah, we'll go ahead and do roll call. Maureen, or Paulie?
Commissioner Whitehead. Commissioner Mazada.
I think for now, she had indicated she'd be there, so.
Commissioner Frank Alonjo.
Present.
Commissioner Mattson. Commissioner Tubbs.
Here.
Commissioner Zelik.
Here.
Commissioner Mathena. Commissioner Bonetta.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, first application ZVA twenty twenty-three dash eleven and twenty twenty-three dash twelve. Six fifty-three Edgewood Road, map twenty-five dash one, block seventeen, lot thirty-seven. Russian and Jessica LeRiv are requesting variances for a front yard setback of seventy feet for a covered front porch addition and a front yard setback of seventy-two feet for a garage addition, where seventy-five feet is required for Berlin zoning regulation five eight ten in the R eighty-six zone. Speaking for the application. Yeah, you sign in and can you, is there a sign in sheet there?
There's a sign in sheet right next to the podium, and what we found is that using clipping that microphone on is the one that makes the remote participants able to hear more clearly than using, you have to really lean into the solid microphone.
The chair is yours.
Okay, so for our front porch addition, one of the reasons why we want to extend it is for curb appeal. A flat fronted house that lacks character becomes a showpiece through the dimension and the character of the front porch addition. Most often, they are the focal point of the house. I normally preach that the front door is the focal point, and that can still be true depending on the depth and the style of the porch. Sometimes the porch becomes your new centerpiece. Often, your eye will go first to the front porch or the columns, so they're wonderfully opportunely and beautiful. In the image above, a small boxy house becomes a work of a new front porch. Another reason why we would like to add a front porch is to raise property value along the neighborhood. Property value goes up along with the taxes which benefit the town. Another reason would be delivery protection and weather protection for the children. An increased number of homeowners are having a front, having a covered front porch covers, added, it adds a protection from weather, and when a child is waiting for a school bus, it can cover them from rain, snow, or anything like that. Energy efficient as well, a covered front porch keeps direct sun away from doors and windows, at least under a roof. This is a small energy saving that can add up over time as well. So for the next thing would be the garage. We're unable to extend more to the back due to the septic system leaching fields in the well. There is no other way around this other than building the garage the way we have designed it to be. Also, our home is built on an angle. It is not squared with the property setbacks, so there is a limited room to build as is. Current vehicle size, none of our cars we own will fit in the current size of our garage. We have a large SUV and two company trucks that will not fit in the garage that's there now. Increase in storage space. Building a bigger garage is increase in storage space and capacity. Many homeowners use this garage primary for storage and to store the vehicles. Good way to hold all our tools and machinery that can't be held inside the house. And another reason is the security for the vehicles. And that's it.
We also have building.
I know we have a lot of property in the back, but building out back is a lot of light. Lot we can't, and there's a hill in the back that we can't do nothing about it. We tried to level it in. We had a big excavator, just big rocks, not rocks, lice that nobody can move.
I can see you're asking for a small amount here of footage, and I can see a hardship with the, associated with the garage addition. It's kind of difficult to see a hardship associated with the front porch, although I understand that, you know, building packages and stuff like that, you know, in inclement weather could cause problems. I don't have any issue with that, but, you know, most of the times we look at variances through hardship situations, and hardship situation here isn't, isn't that strong, but again, it's it's a small amount of footage that you're asking for, so I don't have a big problem with it. I don't know if anybody else has any questions from you, I don't have any.
Continue on the hardships, you had mentioned in the application about the septic system, you didn't mention anything here about that.
Yeah, I mean, I did, I have a new. Sorry, I have a new plan, if you guys can pull this up, it shows where this septic system and the leaching field is. We, we can only go to the, if you look, if you look in the front of the house, little bit to the right and to the front, that's it. Can't build anywhere else. It's like I said, we said the house is not square to our property. It's on an angle.
I don't know.
Can I ask her the, was online, is that plan show the septic differently than on this plan? If I'm, they're shared on the screen.
Yeah, it's, you can draw it in. It's right there.
Where the leach.
Mike.
I gave it to the building department, they said I was supposed to give it to you, and I did it like two weeks ago.
It is roughly.
Yeah.
Close to the same location, alright, I just want to make sure that Ryan has good information.
If you want to draw it in on that map, you can draw it in on that, or you don't have a you don't have the ability to edit that, do you? Yeah, right there, yeah. Or even at the front of the house. Yeah, all the way up to the front.
It literally goes up to the seventy-five foot.
Right there, right there, seventy-five foot line, yeah, okay. That's it, you got it. Close enough.
Okay, and furthermore, you mentioned company vehicles in the garage. Can you tell us more about that? Is there, is there a business operating in that?
No, I just a foreman, I have a big, very big truck that I drive, and she has a very big SUV. And with the front porch is mainly for the city. Brings up the value with the surrounding houses in our house, more taxes.
That's not a hardship.
I guess it is that you'll be paying more taxes, but it's the only hardship.
Well, the hardship is the houses on the angle already as it is.
Maureen, listen.
There are garage on the house now.
Yes, a very small.
It's on the other side.
No, it's.
Yeah, tiny island set it up.
Okay.
It's wherever we're, I don't know.
You know, you're putting.
Can I show you the mouse on the computer?
She can bring it up on a computer.
Where the garage is right now.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just.
It's just smaller than.
Much smaller, the one car garage that's very small, I don't know how this any vehicle.
Helicane is wearing hot.
Garage door. On the smaller side. And the architectural plans are in your.
So you're extending, you're extending on that garage?
Yes.
Correct.
So you're, are you putting a whole addition in the house to get car, and you're gonna use that for living space?
No, we're gonna have an attic on top.
Pardon me?
An attic on top. What would that?
No, I'm talking about that physical garage right now.
Okay.
Is that still gonna remain a garage?
Yes.
Yes.
You're just making it better.
I mean, the only thing that can fit in there right now is probably a zero-turn lawnmower, and that's about it.
Yeah. Okay, anybody have any more questions? Thank you.
Our plan for the garage goes twenty-four by.
We're good. Yeah, we have that. I'm surprised they didn't put another couple of five feet in front of it. Well, somebody tried to, you have, you have a water line coming into the house? Water line? I'll turn it back. Okay, so you don't have any utilities coming in front? Probably they didn't put it back an extra five feet to begin with.
The zoning require that was the farm agricultural zones back then, and that didn't have the some of the older houses on the street are the same.
Yeah.
Close to the same, that back, but they're, they're far distant from each other.
Okay. I'll make a motion to close the hearing on this application, is any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? You take a roll, Maureen.
Well, that's just to close the hearing, that's fine, because you'll revisit it.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to see if Ryan had any issues.
I'm good.
Oh, you're good, okay, all right, thanks, Ryan. All right. Second application is ZVA twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, fourteen seventy-four Berlin Turnpike. Map eighteen-three, block three, lot eighteen E. Timothy Sullivan Esquire, representing the Pine Loft LLC, is requesting a sale of alcoholic beverages location approval for an outdoor patio restaurant liquor permit for Berlin zoning regulation eleven B. The property is owned by Korea LLC.
Good evening.
Counselor.
We were just here a couple months ago, you may recall. We previously had a beer and wine permit. We're in the process of going through Liquor Control Commission to expand that, to change from a beer and wine to a full liquor permit. This commission granted that application back in June. At that time, there was an oversight, there's a patio, there's a cupboard and an open patio that was intended to be included as part of that application. Tonight, we are looking to have the liquor control application amended, and we're going to be doing that if we can get approval from the CVA tonight to expand to a patio extension. And that's the purpose of our, of our meeting tonight, of our application tonight.
Is the patio enclosed? I'm sure it is.
Part of the patio is enclosed, part of it is open. That, that, there will be tables with umbrellas and things like that on the open part of it. But there is a covered part of it. It's all elevated on the concrete, there are, there is a picture that was submitted. And there's also a sketch of the, the architectural sketch of the closed tables on the patio, yes.
Okay, the only thing that I think was an issue with, some of these locations in the past has been if it's closed in so that nobody can walk out with liquor out into the street or, you know. And if it's sealed off, and it can only go through the inside of the building, then I think we're okay, I mean, you know, that's why I asked if it was closed in, you know.
It's not closed in, I mean, there are, there will be barriers to prevent that, but you have to go into the restaurant, then you come back out of the restaurant to get seated.
Good, okay, I got you. Yeah. Makes sense. I think we had that same issue with a blue lobster or something or other back a while ago. And just make sure that it was sealed off so that they couldn't walk out onto the highway.
Yes.
They had to go back through the restaurant, yeah. Any questions on this?
What about the live bands?
Those are indoors. It's a live acoustic entertainment generally. There's quite a bit of entertainment here, but it's all acoustic or karaoke type. And there is, there, in the architectural that was provided, there is the area of the, of the entertainment of the band as depicted on the sketch.
What, what type hours are they going to remain in?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Open till ten before.
Exactly, yeah.
Ten or eleven.
It would be, it would be the same hours as is approved for the, for the full liquor application that was approved in June.
We we approved the liquor.
Beer and wine.
It was previously a beer and wine, and then in June, we came in with an application to extend it to a full liquor applicant, full liquor permit. That was approved. This is just to extend it to a patio, to allow patio service. Excuse me? This is all existing, it's all elevated.
In the June.
Round in the building.
Yeah, I don't know why, I don't know.
I brought up on the screen the floor plan that they supplied with the tables shown for the patio. This is the patio that wraps around on the north side of the building.
We didn't do any of that.
You mentioned it's elevated on that sidewalk, right outside the main entrance, is there a barrier planned between or on that elevation?
Yes, we can, we can provide a barrier if the commission wants to impose it as a condition, but we would be doing that anyways. Very, very similar, any sidewalk on an inner city.
Well.
Outside dining.
Your hours for the entertainment. Was there any issue with that? Mr. Commissioner Tubbs asked a question about that, I just wanted to try to find out what the hours are for the entertainment.
I mean, right now, they're usually closed around ten or eleven, they have a lot of acoustic and, and what do they call it, open mic. They listed, enlisted, they're, they're listed as live band. There really is no entertainment on the.
The extension of use. Oh, yeah, oh, oh. They didn't bring up, we didn't bring up the application from the June meeting, but the patio was not checked on, if you look at the the application for on-premises liquor permit, one that says application for on-premises liquor permit, that was reviewed at your June meeting, not check off patio.
Where's the omission?
He then submitted.
Here's the application for the June. Yeah, this is a June meeting application, right here.
Oh, you have?
Yeah. I got everything.
And we'll look if live bands was approved at that.
Yeah, lucky.
But when Attorney Sullivan came in with his application, he brought in this application, which is revised, one of the the original liquor permit. But the, what he'll, I, what I understand, he'll be submitting to the state at this point, because they already got this one without patio, will be the extension of use?
Yes, we will.
Permit, and that's the other application that's in your package that he submitted afterwards. Not realizing that was the process. Have you, you've submitted this one to the state already?
Yes.
The one from June went to this.
One from June is submitted to the state, and we told them that if this was approved for a patio, we would be supplementing and amending that application to extend it to a patio as well.
So the one reviewed.
Because they have live bands inside the building.
Yes.
Right.
There was no, there's no live bands proposed for outside the building. Or any, any live entertainment at all.
This question is just like we do on every application that goes for liquor. They are rather close. Liquor license, you know, it can be open till two in the morning and one in the morning, and
Yes.
Live bands off the Berlin Turnpike have notoriously been complained about year after year after year, when they used to have the band at that place across the street.
Across the street.
I'm just trying to avoid a problem.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's been live entertainment here for years.
Yeah, acoustic, but that's not checked off on here. What's checked off on here is live music.
He limits it to acoustic for the most part, and the karaoke, and I think he has some, some country type bands in there.
I have no problem with the band, I just.
Then he could, you know.
Well, not, not worried about that. I'm worried about a full-fledged two o'clock in the morning band playing. The phones will be ringing.
This is generally a restaurant. There is, there is no standalone bar, it's just table service, even for liquor.
I trust you.
I'll be adding the comments and the testimony to minutes. I do just want to make out that that would have been approved with that June application. And therefore, the appropriate application that they're looking for approval for is, as I said, the application to the extension of use, and that is the that would be the form you'd be authorizing staff to sign.
Okay.
I apologize.
Other one was.
My, my office is far, my part, they're not checking patio on the actual formal application, just like making real work of us. Want to fill your agenda tonight, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions? Motion made to close the application, and motion seconded. Any staff comments? Any comments in favor, opposition? If not, yeah, for or against? If not, we have a motion to close.
Yes, we do.
And motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So I will just note for the record that Mr. Mazada entered the meeting before that item.
Okay. Thank you, next application. ZVA twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, ten forty-one, ten fifty-five, Farmington Avenue, map nine dash four, block eighty-four, lot two B. Peter LaPointe, Colvest Kensington LLC, is requesting a variance to relocate a freestanding sign for Starbucks twenty-nine feet from the building, where nowhere than ten feet is allowed for Berlin zoning regulation nine A six E four. Property is in a CCD two zone. Speaking for the application. Or is yours, ma'am?
Good evening, for the record, my name's Megan Hope, I'm an attorney with Alter and Pearson and Glastonbury. I'm here tonight representing the property owner, Colvest Kensington LLC. Also, here with me tonight from the Colvest Group is Dominic Bellano. He'll be on hand to answer any questions that the board has. Maureen, do you think you could put up this plan? Okay, if, I do have handouts, so maybe while she's pulling that up, we'll at least pass these handouts up, and I'll put one on the board as well. Pass these handouts up and I'll put one on the board as well.
Maureen, is this one? Is this supposed to come before us? This is a state highway.
But the sign is on their property.
I know, but didn't we have to do the setback of twenty-five feet for state highway?
Did they, they require?
We've had that before.
That's a. Conversation about a sign on town property last year, two years ago. The state had told us that signs have to be a minimum of ten feet off their travel or.
Sorry, here.
Structures have to be a minimum of ten feet off their travel way, not off their property line. Again, any encroachments within the area that they require would be a separate permit through DOT anyway. But you have seen several applications for variances to modify the distance.
So the map that I passed out is the sketch, the S K one sketch that we submitted with the application. This application relates to ten forty-one and ten fifty-five Farmington Avenue. It's the site. Sort of sandwiched between Farmington Avenue and Porter's Pass containing the previous blockbuster building, which is now. Under construction as the Starbucks building and also the CVS is located. On the opposite side of the lot. Back in December of twenty twenty-two, the Planning and Zoning Commission had approved the redevelopment of that former blockbuster building into the Starbucks building. Including the approval of the drive-through that circumvented that building. Including on the side adjacent to Farmington Avenue. Since nineteen ninety-seven approximately, when the CVS was first developed, this site has had two. Existing freestanding signs located on the site. One was for the CVS and that was obtained through a variance process in nineteen ninety-nine. The other was a freestanding sign that was dates all the way back to Larry's Diner, which was on the site a while ago. So there've always been two freestanding signs on the site since the CVS was there in the nineties. What we're looking to do now is relocate the freestanding sign that was located. Next to the former blockbuster building and I highlighted that on what I handed out in green. That's located, if you look basically right at the car that is by the drive-through window. So where the driveway is now is where that freestanding sign was located presently. And we're looking at shifting that down a little bit further into the site into the end island adjacent to that crosshatch. Parking space and I also on the handout I just passed out, I did highlight that in green. It is a little bit hard to, hard to pick up Maureen, but it's located basically in the bottom of that island. Next to the crosshatch. The location of the sign is more than ten feet away from the building. Your regulation requires those freestanding signs to be within ten feet of the building. So we are further away from the ten feet than that is required, but obviously the. Existing location of the drive-through prevents us from putting that sign within that ten-foot buffer, which I've highlighted in yellow on the plan. It is important to note that the distance from the existing sign to Farmington Avenue and the proposed sign to Farmington Avenue is about the same. It's only a two-inch difference. So it's really no closer to Farmington Avenue than it is now. But it is located further away from the building. Our hardship is that the regulation obviously limits the distance of a freestanding sign to no more than ten feet from the. Building, but it's physically impossible based on the location of the drive-through, which is essentially. Within, all within that ten-foot buffer along, around the building. So we are unable to place that freestanding sign within the buffer. So we looked for the most appropriate location on the site, one that required the least, would require the least amount of a variance from. The board and the location we selected and showed on the plan is where we feel that it best accomplishes that. So I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has or any questions from members of the public.
I got a question. The sign that's there now that has the paint from the paint company that was there. Isn't that right on the curb? Not where.
In the middle of that. Or next to that crosshatch.
There now is like literally right on the edge.
It's, it's in the, it's in the proposed location.
Yeah.
It's already built.
They relocated the sign not realizing that that relocation required. Separate approval.
That sign for Boyle's Paint.
They took the paint, the sign that was in this location here, which is right, my two marks are in the right place.
Yeah.
Okay, so they took the sign that was here that was the paint sign before that blockbuster. And moved it into the new island that's been created with the building.
Okay.
And got called out on it. They wait, you can't move the sign. And so, yes, it is after it was moved that they're asking for the variance. But that would be the process regardless. They're asking for a variance to allow that their relocated location to remain.
Well, from what we were looking at, that sign is already there.
I'm not from Missouri, but how come you don't have a picture of the sign in yet?
You want, well, I think Dominic does have. An elevation and I believe as he mentioned previously to me, it is the exact same sign that was there previously. It is smaller. Than the square footage that's allowed. I'll pass that down, but essentially it's a. Yeah, and you know, oh. It's so it's gonna, and I'll describe it because I know we have somebody online. So it is a. The height of the sign is thirteen feet, eight inches from the grade to the top of the sign. It's got a pole and then a rectangle on the top of it, which has. The sign face obviously on it and the dimensions of that sign feed, sign face are eight feet long by three feet, two inches wide. And it would have two tenant sign panels. We obviously have the Starbucks and then there is space for another tenant within that building that we don't have yet. So you'll see, yes, you'll see a blank when I pass this around a blank sign face. So that would be for the, the other tenant. But it's a ten point two square foot sign panel per each tenant. So I'll pass that down.
So I just pulled up quickly the painter's edge sign, the last. Little photo we have of the painter's edge sign where they took it from.
Yes, yes, we are. Repainting it and.
I, give me a minute. I'm going to try to pull the other one up.
You're gonna put two signs in one.
Yeah, we're not looking for any increase in the square footage.
Yeah, let's see, I drive by it daily. I don't remember Larry's Diner though.
Wasn't that fifty-seven?
You're a dinosaur.
That's why I thought it had been twenty-five years, twenty-six years.
Tony's Nate.
My name is nineteen ninety-nine. I did it all. No salary too. You still, you still having trouble finding it? I thought you were looking for the Starbucks.
We are.
Oh.
We're not finding it in the system. Help me might have had it.
Oh, okay.
I don't know that we've submitted the sign face.
So it may have been when they came in to apply and realized that.
I'll just note for the record as well, we did post the sign and send out the notice to the abutters as well.
So it's going to be up on a pole.
Correct. It's up, it's on a pole.
You can't have it on the street, on, on the ground.
We, no, we just are relocating that existing sign.
Well, Route sixty-six all over again.
They've already relocated.
We've already relocated.
They did? Okay, thanks.
That's why I said it's in that, it's in that area now.
There's shrubs there in front of it anyway though. Well, yeah. But not there.
Yeah, as far as construction, we're still working on the building pad and then Starbucks will come in and finish their. Interior fit out. So we're still in the middle of construction with the project.
Sorry, we don't have that.
You don't have. So this is already done? Why are you applying for it now then?
Because they did it and they weren't supposed to.
Because we didn't get the permit first.
Okay, all right, okay.
I have a question, Tony. Colt, the landlord slash developer is pretty seasoned and they, I mean, they should know signage is a hot topic. Why did they move the pylon sign without checking? Regulations first.
I don't know. I, that's, well, I guess that's, that's a good question.
Sure. So we had shown the relocated sign as part of the zoning approval. And I believe it was just an oversight regarding the, the distance from the building. I, there was some. Research that was done because we do believe, we're not totally sure where the original Larry's sign was. Because that seems, the location of that sign does predate this ten-foot rule off the building. And one area that we were researching was to try to determine what that dimension was. Because you are allowed to maintain that non-conforming dimension away from the building. We did a lot of research and I believe with our application, we submitted a lot of different items about that sign. But we were never able to get a site plan that showed how far the Larry's Diner sign was off the building. It's possible that where we have the sign now is that same distance off the building, but we weren't able to do that. So we felt that the prudent approach was to file for the variance.
That whole lot was totally different configured back then.
Yeah, I believe Exhibit A in the materials, I think, shows, shows that Larry's diner building. But yes, it was a total different configuration.
I know, stopped and shopped years ago, wanted to put a sign with a pole. Thirteen feet up in the air or fourteen feet up in the air. And we told them no. And it's the signs on the ground. So, I mean, we're going down Farmington Avenue. And, you know, it's not the greatest place in the world, but because, you know, you walk on a sidewalk, you walk into a telephone pole, but. Throwing a pole up in the air thirteen feet, I don't know why that sign was approved there to begin with. But I'm not a big fan of these.
Regulations do allow for the pole sign.
Yeah.
Be up to sixteen feet high or the height of the building, whichever is less.
Right.
So this sign does meet that criteria and I'm confident of that because. I'm changing to painter's edge was one of the first things I did and I started working for the town and had to make sure the sign was the right height.
Yeah.
So the painter's edge sign, which is the pole they're reusing.
Correct.
Was, is the size and design that matches the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but I'm just.
Criteria for.
I'm just saying that's, I'm just saying it's an opportunity to change.
All our best.
There was an opportunity to change it and, you know, nobody took advantage of it.
Yes, I believe we're, one of the reasons we're maintaining the sign, not only is it onsite, but we also had to, as part of the zoning approval. Do some pretty heavy landscaping to screen, screen the drive-through. So having the sign elevated definitely helps with that. And so we've obviously put, we have in our approved plan, we've put in all this landscaping. So then to sort of tuck the sign behind and didn't make a lot of sense.
Okay. Okie dokie.
They'll find you without a sign.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Kofler. Staff comments, any more?
Motion to close the, the item?
We're just looking for comments from the public. Anybody, any comments in opposition, any comments in favor of the application? If not.
Motion to close.
A motion to close the hearing on the application. A motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's closed. Application ZBA twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, no, dash fifteen, I'm sorry. Robert Manzo, Catching Instruction LLC is requesting a site. A use variance of Berlin Zone Regulation eleven seven B for an indoor baseball training facility for Berlin Zone Regulation. Fifteen A four. The property is owned by one hundred Harding Holdings Incorporated in a G I zone. And speaking for the application.
Hello, everyone. My name is Robert Manzo, speaking on behalf of Manzo Catching Instruction. Thank you for having me tonight. My hardship is the facility area that I found. Is not listed for right of use for recreation instruction. It's like a quick little background. I've been coaching baseball close to thirty years now, instructing. Baseball players of all ages. One of my longtime lifetime goals is to open my own instruction business. And I found this nice spot on Harding Street where actually my parents live. So it was pretty funny, they're right up the street. But anyway, the spot I found on hundred Harding. Is about twenty-four hundred square feet within the building. The timing of our. Lessons and such would be after work time, so after four or five o'clock. So I know parking and traffic area on Harding Street. You know, maybe an objection, but it's not a huge facility. I have a quick picture of a sample of what. It may look like, just a couple batting cages. Pretty small area, maybe to host anywhere from, you know, five to ten players at a time. And for private lessons. So the, the business itself, I have many clients now that I work with. And giving back to the town of Berlin, most of my clients are from Berlin. I actually coached the Legion team in town. I've been heavily involved, so I'm looking to just continue to help the youth in Berlin with my instruction business. And I found this nice spot and, you know, I'm just trying to get over the, the use area of it. So I did also have a quick picture on the parking. I did speak to the owners. And they mapped off where I could use the parking after hours. So if anyone wants to see that, I also, I also have that. That's kind of. That's kind of it. I don't know if anyone, anyone had any questions on what we're trying to do.
I'm pretty familiar with what Rob's trying to do with his program. And no one has since he played Little League. And the use for, use in that building of something like this would be a welcome. In my opinion, welcome change.
Comment related to the use of the building and, and variances with regard to use. So the industrial zones, for any of you who may not be familiar, are the one. One category of zones, G I M P I, which is the I two and P I two. Where use variances may be granted by the ZBA according to the regulations. Otherwise, we don't allow you experiences. Can't get a use variance to have a two-family house in an R forty-three zone, you know. The category where that happened. As far as the property of one hundred Harding Street goes, it has a history of having. Uses in the building that are non-conforming and not permitted and has been an enforcement issue. Staff would encourage that at times when. Uses can go in that makes sense. uses can go in that makes sense in the building and that um the boards, whether it be the Planning and Zoning Commission or the Zoning Board of Appeals, depending on what uses they are, et cetera, when we get um uses that make sense to the board making that decision, it makes the zoning enforcement officer's job much easier, because that has been a problematic building with uses that we are regularly removing from the property. Um, I'll note that the end unit at this end of the, I'm not sharing my screen, look at that, I'm drawing on my screen and I'm not sharing it, hold on one second. Oh. This is the building, the, um, at this end of the building, they've recently added, this is the building, they've recently added a manufacturer, which is the traditional use of the building, and um, we've gotten some positive um reaction to that, as well as created a space that had been extremely problematic with unauthorized uses. Um, this use is to the north of that. Um, we did note in our, in the um, final I staff report that a zoning analysis for the parking will have to be completed before we can complete a zoning sign-off for the use in the amount of square footage that there, should you approve a use variance. You know, there has to be a zoning analysis and then a determination as to whether or not it also needs site plan approval. However, we did discover from the time the building was created, that all this extra area that is parking, and didn't we find a parking map that showed parking in that area?
No.
Not in that area, okay, um, but this has all been added to the property since the building, which otherwise would have had pretty non-conforming parking for the sides of the building, even for manufacturing, there wasn't a lot of parking. Originally, parking was on this property on some of the older site plans directly across the street at the corner of Linden and Harding Street. That property is no longer available for parking for this use because it has a use on that parcel that you utilize parking on that parcel.
We'll talk about that later.
Is additional, there is additional parking also on the extent, the L, I'll say, of the L leg of their site that goes to the north.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and they, it was garages and they've done some work over there and that is also parking, so um.
They've cleared that area out totally on that side, it made it, made it nice.
Yeah, it, there have been a lot of site improvements um, that have happened, and consequently, we did do um, an evaluation of the parking. Uh, we found that on one of the use approvals from I'm gonna say ten, twenty years ago, it was early two thousands, where we did find that the building had the divisions as to what the, the uses were at that time. They were allowed a, a use change for one of the uses from manufacturing, so um given the new information, I'm not too concerned that we won't find adequate parking, but we may need from the zoning commission to determine appropriate parking. So this is really more about whether a use that you'd um, um encourage, um, what word I'm looking for? Approve, I guess, a use variance for a manufacturer for this type of use. I will also note that on Demming Road, uh, off Demming Road, Willowbrook Drive, uh, a use variance was granted in that industrial zone for a similar style facility for baseball softball training.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and another one utilizes a similarly designed, indu- or industrial designed building um, further out Demming Road, it's currently the BT zone, but it had been a manufacturer as well. And um, manufacturing buildings are the scale or industrial buildings are the size and scale that are useful to those, these types of uses, they can't have in retail space. Depending on the, go with the building. So I just wanted to give you some history on that.
I'm convinced, where's the golden buzzer? Where's the golden buzzer? Yeah, you know, it's.
It's still a variant.
I understand.
Keep that in mind, it is.
Yeah. But it's a good, it's a good, good variance.
Uh, quick question, Mr. Manzo, uh, the business plan, uh, was that written before you identified this property or after?
Uh, kind of during, I've always, over the last probably like fifteen years, always kind of had my eye out for
Yeah.
For uh, you know, space, so it's kind of been something I've been familiar with all along, but.
The reason I ask is because you showed us the picture, uh, and then you explained, you know, well, you know, like maybe for ten people or something like that, but uh, it made me think that the business plan was a little bit more ambitious, and you, you kind of downplayed it, so are there plans for expansion? And, and could you expand, should other space become available?
I, I mean, personally, at my age right now, where I am, it's not something I'm looking to do that big. Uh, I have a full-time job, so coaching is a hobby, if you will, so it's really honestly for a smaller scale, yeah, I don't see myself getting that big.
Good, thanks.
For the record, could you reiterate what the square footage proposed for this UBIT use variance is? Because it would be specific, any, any approval would be specific to the um area that he's asking for at this time, and any expansion would require further review as well, so.
Yeah, twenty, twenty-four hundred, sixty by forty, yeah.
Dear Speaker.
No, it's off.
Hot sounding.
Okay, questions and comments in favor of the application, comments in opposition, there are none. Uh, if not, uh, I'll make a motion to close the hearing on the application. A motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's closed, uh, the last application for tonight is uh, ZBA twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, six fifty-eight Berlin Turnpike, map ten dash four, block eighty-three C, lot fifty-two. Uh, Giovanni Gomez, Car Guy's Automotive LLC is requesting a motor vehicle use location approval for used car dealer and general repair license for Berlin zoning regulation eleven R and fifteen, property is owned by Cisaltina Viveros.
Yes.
And a BT one zone.
Isn't this garage already up and operating?
See a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of uh.
Yes, uh, good evening, um, my name is Giovanni Gomez, uh, Car Automotive LLC. Uh, this is the old Maniki location, I, my understanding is that that's been a um uh, repair shop and, and used auto deal place for many, many years in the past. Our proposal is to reopen that location, um. We're looking again to establish the uh, use uh, car lot slash general repair shop.
Uh, you're right, yeah, you're on Woodland Road, right, right on, around the corner.
Right in the corner.
Yeah.
Aren't you open already?
No, uh, no.
A lot of things going on there.
There's a tent place right next to it.
Yeah, but that, that's not bringing in all the cars that are down there.
No, 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 tho- those are our vehicles that are down there, yes, sir, we uh, we've had, we leased that location probably about three months now, uh, we have uh, not been able to sell any vehicles, obviously, we're waiting for all the uh, requirements to be uh, completed.
Are you repairing them now?
We have vehicles inside the shop, uh, but uh, I don't believe we're doing any repairs, sir. Now, we just hired a mechanic, a certified mechanic, now he may be in there with his tools doing stuff to his uh, vehicle, but we are not running the business as a repair or selling any vehicles until we have final approval from the committee and of course from the DMV.
Is there a dealer's license on that property now? Or was there a dealer license with uh, Maniki?
Um, I believe there was at some point, that's what the uh, landlord uh told us that in the past, it's been and I think they mentioned like twenty years.
Well, I don't think it's been that long, but they've been there a while.
Yeah, I think two thousand twenty, maybe, I mean, two thousand two. That sound about right?
It's possible, I mean, time, time goes by and we don't even notice.
The way I remember it is that the, Maniki wasn't the dealer, they were the, the repair shop, and then the, the other location was an extension of uh, the guy on the turnpike, um, American Auto.
Well, that's totally illegal, but.
No, he, but, but, but no, but there was, the, I remember it, I mean, because I thought there, there was, there was an item that came before while I've been here uh, for the used car shop on the side before the tent place ever got in there.
Well, the tent place was relocated when they redid the the gas station on the corner of Demming Road and, and Berlin Turnpike, owned by Home Depot. They were in back, in the back of that building until they remodeled it and rebuilt it, the tent place has only been there a couple of years.
Hmm. Yeah, they were at the uh, fuel station or whatever.
They were doing repairs and I don't, I don't know, like I said, I'm asking about the dealer's license on the property now. Mainly because you need place to store and show the vehicles on the highway and that's be, been a kind of a sticky subject with some of the stuff that people have been putting the cars in the state right away and it's caused a lot of problems, and you don't have a lot of frontage there, so putting cars out in front of that for sale could be a hardship for you, yes, sir.
Maureen's got the staff comments, I hear the history, the last piece of the history there is the twelve seventeen nineteen. Zoning Certificate of Compliance.
So there was a two thousand two approval that allowed for used car sales, it did have a limit on the sales for four cars, and if you look at the site plan that was included in your package, it's the grayed out area in the, um, on the southeast corner of the site as the sale, used vehicle sales area. What we did find with that license or that approval was that at that time, um, the um, according to the plan, the regulations called for um operation to have a certain number of spaces and then two spaces per bay, and um, there's three bays, the um, now the regulation is three per bay. So they only had four extra spaces at that time, the calculation I did today or did this week, um, with Polly's assistance working through the criteria for these applications is that Sun Tent Sun Glory, Sun.
Sun Glory.
Sun Glory.
Sun Glory Tent was given their certificate of zoning compliance with their square footage for three spaces to be dedicated to them, there's twenty spaces allocated on this last approved site plan. Um, three of those spaces for Sun Glory, then the, if, if and I would have asked the applicant to confirm, confirm the number of bays, repair bays inside the garage, but according to that plan, there were three bays at the time, so three days times three is nine spaces, so a total of twelve of the twenty spaces dedicated to the shop use of the property, both the tent and the repair, um, and so the remaining spaces of the twenty potentially be allocated for bay, now that is dependent on the number of bays.
Let me, uh, just a quick side question, is, does this require a letter from the owner so he can speak? Because if, we don't have a letter from the owner.
I believe we, uh.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, sure.
Oh, you do, okay.
That administrative stuff in our.
Okay, alright.
Check for those things via that.
Yeah, I'm not, it's not, it wasn't in the file.
All those we keep, we usually have in our, we keep.
Usually, usually it's in our, usually it's in our package. Yeah, we have copies in our package, we don't have it.
I don't, I, I think I stopped copying those into packages a number of years ago because it was a lot of extra.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
To reduce the copying cost.
Okay.
Um, I will note that, and you can see by this aerial or this Google Street view, there is an area to the south of the garage that I understand has been cleared out. Um, I'm gonna zoom down there, but there's this fenced-in area that is a buffer to the residential zone and is not approved on the site plan as parking. Um, this person back in, oh, I don't know that this is accurate, we wouldn't have thought it would be unless they just went out in the last two weeks. Um, five, or less three, I guess, this last year, oh, twenty-two, it's twenty-two's photo, so before this applicant, I don't know what year it is. Uh, I guess I thought it was still twenty-five, um, this parking down here would not be allowed.
The parking was used for storage of cars behind the fence so they could charge fenced-in, fenced storage areas, and since they weren't approved record service, they literally could charge any amount they wanted.
So, th- this new applicant, I would say if they wanted to extend into that area, would be required to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission and change their site plan. This um, two thousand two plan is the last approved site plan, so that, that we found. So that is the layout of parking, that's allowed parking would happen.
Right.
Is to be in compliance with this.
On their plan, it has a proposed addition to the building?
Yeah, that was in two thousand.
And they did that addition?
Yeah, that happened.
Okay.
That's this end here, that's when they did the chart for the um uh, or plus, it was only allowing for four cars, again, regulations change.
Okay.
Yeah, that was the Olefski's Construction, used to be in that building.
Any additional?
Can I, um, can I just say something, uh, yeah, we're just trying to use the existing facility, uh, we don't really want to change anything, uh, and we just want to make sure that um the town, uh, you know, clearly, you know, uh, let us know what the requirements are so we can be in total compliance. I'm a retired um, state employee, uh, I worked twenty-five years with the Department of Corrections. I have an opportunity to open up a, a shop with my son, which I've been dreaming for a long time, and this is the opportunity that we have. So we'd like to um, be able to uh, to fulfill that dream that we've had, you know, brought my son for a long time, and and we're hoping that you uh, you have a soul.
Thank you.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Staff comments?
Okay, so then what, did I, do you have anything else, you, you looked at the applicant a little more than I did?
Any comments in favor of the application? Any comments in opposition to the application? Uh, entertaining motion to close the hearing.
Seconded.
A motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, that's closed. Um, we're gonna go into uh, old business. First application, ZBA twenty twenty-three dash eleven, twenty twenty-three dash twelve, six fifty-three Edgewood Road. Ruslan and Jessica LeRiv. Did I say that right? Okay, are requesting variances for a front yard setback of seventy feet for a covered front porch addition and a front yard setback of seventy-two feet for a garage addition where seventy-five feet is required for Berlin zoning regulation five eight ten in an R eighty-six zone. In an R eighty-six zone. There are a motion to approve this application.
Can I just note for the record that Ryan would be seated on this? Application as Christine had mentioned.
Yes.
I make a motion, we accept this application.
Second motion. Okay. Um. A motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 ZBA application twenty twenty-three dash oh nine, fourteen seventy-four Berlin Turnpike. Map eighteen three block thirty-one lot eighteen E. Timothy Sullivan Esquire requesting. Pine Loft LLC. Representing the Pine Loft LLC is requesting a sale of alcohol beverages location approval for an outdoor patio restaurant. Liquor permit for Berlin's own regulation eleven B. Property is owned by Korea LLC. I'll make a motion to approve this application. Motion made and seconded, uh.
They already have the liquor application approved for the liquor permit, correct?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that.
Okay.
That's the, uh, the June, uh.
We're approved, we're approving the outer patio, outdoor patio.
Approving liquor. For the outdoor.
For the outdoor patio.
You can keep that, by the way.
Them, go to them too.
Yeah, you can keep that June twenty-third.
Everything that's been handed out.
Yeah, it's, it's right there. Remember the two things. Um, multiple copies of one of them.
So we have motion made and seconded. Uh, do you want to take a roll on these motions?
If they're unanimous, it's okay. It's when we have.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. That's approved.
If now, um. Christine would be seated and. Brian would no longer be seated.
Okay.
A regular member.
Alright, ZBA twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, ten forty-one, ten fifty-five Farmington Avenue. Map nine dash four block eighty-four lot two B. Peter J. La Point, Colus. Kensington LLC is requesting a variance to relocate a freestanding sign. For Starbucks twenty-nine feet from the building when no more than ten feet is allowed for Berlin's own regulation nine A six E four. Property is in a CCD two zone. A motion to approve this application?
I moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. All right, who's voting now? Confused.
Uh, Christina is voting on the other two applicants, on these last three applications.
Okay.
Hi, Ryan.
Okay. Next application is ZBA twenty twenty-three dash fifteen. One hundred Harding Street, map nine dash one block twenty-eight lot twenty-seven. Robert Manzo, Code Catching Instruction LLC is requesting. Use variance of Berlin zoning regulation seven B for an indoor baseball training facility for Berlin zoning regulation. Fifteen A. Four, the property is owned by one hundred Harding Holdings Incorporated in a G I zone.
Make, make a motion, we accept this application.
Golden buzzer. Oh, well, make a motion, we accept this application. I'll second a motion. We have a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um. Last application, ZBA twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, six fifty-eight Berlin Turnpike. Map ten dash four block eighty-three C lot fifty-two. Giovanni Gomez Car Guy's Automotive LLC is requesting a motor vehicle use location approval. For a used car dealer and general repairers license for Berlin zoning, zoning regulation. Eleven R and fifteen. The property is owned by. Sis Altina Viverios in a BT one zone. We have a motion to approve this application.
I make a motion, we approve this. What is this? Per, permit, right?
Use.
Use, use.
Use dealer.
Use location.
Use location. With, uh, the stipulation that, uh, the. Used car sales, car park there remains the same at four cars.
Or they, uh.
Or they get a plan.
Well, it's up to you whether you would allow the balance of required spaces. For used cars, which I think is eight cars now.
Well, I, I, I normally don't have a problem with that, but knowing this business fairly well, I think if he's gonna be repairing cars, he's gonna need the spaces for. Repair cars and not sell, sale cars. But. That's only my opinion. So. My, I made a motion that we accept the application or accept the. Use. Permit, permission and. The stipulation they have the four cars for sale at this time.
Second motion. We have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Why?
I don't know.
How many bays on that? Two? Or three?
Record shows three.
I have to stay with it because like I said, I know what it takes. I know how many cars you're gonna have. I just don't want to see overflow of cars.
Trying to give, um. So without. Yeah, I think this is guy, I would. Guidance during deliberation, so. Have to, you know. Watch, but. Um, the option. When. An approval is given an applicant. To have the opportunity in the future to come back to amend.
Well, he might end up. He may, he may, he may end up getting permission for, does he have to go to ZBA for? At, um. Zoning, does he have to go zoning to for the, that other part of the property?
If, if he was to utilize that part of the park.
Well, I'm sure he's gonna utilize.
Acquire a new site plan approval at what the.
Got a fence theory of.
That is shown on the approved site plan as a buffer. And so encroaching into the residential buffer. Would be something the commission would have to deliberately modify. So at this point, I would say any parking there now that. Sam has been called to our attention. It was clearly being used for a number of years. Um. But. Without realizing this is a violation, it's now. We know it's a violation. It's been. Guys to the applicant, it's meeting, it's a violation to use that enclosed area. So they can't use that enclosed area. That would be a enforcement issue if they do without going to the zoning commission for a modification to their. Um, parking layout.
Okay. So if the capacity. Uh, is, if he needs more capacity, he'd have to come back to, to us. More than four.
If, if. With the motion that was made on the floor. If the. If they would want to modify it. In a year. Because of the balance of the business. The zoning board of appeals to make that decision. If they went to, if they were to modify their site plan, have more parking. And they had a different parking layout that had more spaces. That, and they wanted to utilize those for sales, they'd also have to come back. Utilize it for more sales.
They would. Wouldn't they do that right through planning and zoning though? Because that's no more site plan approval.
Uh, the changing the parking layout to include that enclosed area.
Have to go with planning and zoning. Okay, and if planning and zoning approved the use of that. They wouldn't have to come back here. Why would they have to come back here?
Because you've limited their, if you limit their car sale.
But if we don't limit it, we're giving them. Current blige to use whatever they want.
No, you'd have to, you would have to limit it.
They go up to.
We got Farmington Avenue's got eight cars. Okay, we limited farm, they were lim, Farmington Avenue was limited to the eight cars and they have twenty-eight cars on that lot right now.
And, and we're pursuing going back to court.
So.
That was a court decision you've, he's had.
This is.
Conversations with counsel to get that. That was.
This is the problem I don't want to run into down the road as well.
I would go with the eight. Uh, I mean, I mean, maybe amended to eight and if it goes over eight, then you got a problem. Well, that's, yeah.
It's not what I'm, that's not what I'm doing. What I'm, what I'm, what I'm assuming is. In this. My motion is for four, okay? If it's not seconded, it dies. Somebody has to make another motion.
Yeah, I seconded it, so.
Okay, so it needs the.
Oh, we have a motion made and seconded. Do you want to vote on it? Sure.
Purpose of doing this. Buy cars to fix them. And sell them, but it fixing it isn't. You know what I mean? What if more?
They're gonna use the parking lot for the other, for the bays to fix them. It's not gonna affect the sale of cars.
The car being fixed is for sale.
They can park it in the spots for the fixing, for the three bays for, three cars per bay. They're still gonna utilize the area. Let's be realistic.
So you want to vote on the motion?
Alright.
Why don't you take a roll?
Well, I've got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So when you say four. Wha- what are we referring to?
Four cars for sale as in this drawing right here. That was, was, was approved when this site plan was approved for the, the previous business. And they allowed four cars for sale.
Okay.
Four cars displayed for sale.
Gotcha.
So if I clarify that as well, a used car dealer's license. Allows. Requires repair of vehicles.
It comes along with used car dealership.
Comes with. Have to have repair facility.
Yep.
And the zoning regulations require a certain number of. Parking spaces. For each bay of repair.
Okay.
That facility has to repair. Uh, the current regulations offer three spaces for that.
Oh, I see. So since there's three bays.
Nine spaces go to the base.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And. And in two thousand two, it was. It was. Four plus. Of repair base. And it was determined with that approval. That four spaces were. Were allowed to be used for car sales. And that.
And is it any different than the application? Okay.
Also, the, the application is just a site plan approved, site approval.
Okay.
We're proving them to have a repair facility on that spot. There's not, no variance. There's, there's nothing else to do with it. The thing that I'm looking at here is we have that fenced in area. I'd be. I could be wrong, but I would think they're gonna be at planning and zoning to get that approval. Either way, we're gonna be back here to give them more area. Okay, because if they get approved to use that area, they're gonna want to use a lot more area. More, 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 to move more cars and parking or whatever. So we're gonna be back here either way. Where I do it four, six or eight cars right now.
Okay. Any more question? We have a motion made and seconded. Uh, it's for four cars, but you know, like I said, that's whatever. I mean. It's maintaining what was there before. Um. I don't know if there's any other questions. If not, uh, can you take a roll call, Maureen? Aye.
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 That's unanimous. Okay, um.
So what we found was, and I. Sorry, but I did not, um. Go back to the, um. Correspondence I was having with Christian late today. Um, but I believe only the. Uh, so the April twenty-fifth minutes that are listed on the agenda and the March twenty-eighth minutes were both already.
Mm-hmm.
That there's don't need to be acted on. And the. You, the June twenty-seventh minutes were distributed as were the May twenty-third. Um, and they can be acted on, but the May thirtieth and February twenty-eighth minutes. Sorry about that.
Do it next time.
Going through. The motions of changing staff on the side. Right, I, yeah, it was correspondence back and forth. We just didn't get to it. So. Um, if you're comfortable acting on the June twenty-seventh meeting. Christian may have it in front of her as to who was seated to make sure that we have the right number. The simple majority is needed for minutes. Hold on, I just gotta pull them up. Hold on. They're probably at the back of the package.
Nah.
What was, weren't.
That's fine.
Look, we both know we printed off.
Yeah, I didn't see him. I, I didn't see him. Yeah. Here's an extra package right there.
Okay, sorry about that confusion. We. Also put them.
We put them off to the next meeting, that's all. Alright.
You're, you're approved.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait, wait.
What?
I have a little bit of commission business.
Oh.
If you don't mind. So, um. A plan of conservation and development was. Um, adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission in June. So we have a twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-three plan of conservation and development. Um, in the writing of the plan of conservation and development, we developed an implementation plan. Um, that is the actions that are recommended to occur over the next ten years. Or the town to continue to work on in order to accomplish the goals in the plan of conservation and development. The zoning board, the, a town council at the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um. Has voted to appoint an implementation committee. The implementation committee is designed to meet approximately quarterly. Each year. And. Um. Certain boards and commissions have been asked to. Um, nominate. A si, a member to serve on that board. Or that committee, rather, it's a committee. Um, to. Continue the work of the P O C D and accomplishing those goals that are in it. The zoning board of appeals is one of the boards. So. What the town council would like to do is to appoint the members to the board, to the committee by. Their second October meeting, which means the opportunity to appoint someone is at this meeting for the zoning board of appeals. They've made it so that it was approximately the length of time that each board would meet prior to. Those nominations going to the. Council. Um, as a little background, this has been done, um, the two thousand three P O C D. Had the implementation committee. Um. Chairman Frank Galangia, I believe, was seated on the implementation committee. Um, the two thousand. Um, the two thousand thirteen plan of conservation. Um. Development does not end up with a committee. So going back to that not be appointed. Um, town council, planning and zoning commission, zoning board of appeals, conservation commission, inland wetlands, economic development. Historic district commission. Parks and Rec. And water control, I believe, are the nine committee, commit boards and commissions that will have a member on the implementation committee.
And how how often are they meeting?
Quarterly. Approximately four times a year. So I would not show like purpose. Is the, so the plan of conservation development is a ten-year plan. And for the town and their goals and, um. Aspirations, and so in the implementation plan that's at the end of plan of. Is a, um. Chart really, what it's formulated like, uh.
His purpose is to implement the plan of conservation and development.
That is to define.
To. To make the goals come to fruition.
Okay.
Actually achieve the things that are in the plan of conservation and development and work out the kinks when there's, you know, maybe conflicting boards.
There's never.
Just work through our boards as is.
So I would, um, encourage you to maybe have a couple of seconds to think about if somebody would like to be on the board and. Want to nominate somebody if at all possible. Someone accept the nomination if at all possible. And I'm sorry that wasn't.
I would nominate Lenny. Yeah. I'll make a motion and nominate Lenny, uh, Lenny.
Somebody else wants to speak up quickly?
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you, would you?
All right, good.
Thank you for your service.
Right, so on the October twenty-fourth, um, town council meeting is when we would expect. Now there is. The committee does require a fair representation like all the other boards and commissions have, we did get that. After we were working on it, so that might take a little bit of tweaking as far as the membership goes in the end, who knows what, how the town council will. Determine, but it's on our recommendations, they're on the recommendations of each of the boards. Um, the second thing is, you'll remember, I hope you remember last year, the year before. We, um, had discussions when I was still coming to your meetings that, um, the. Planning and zoning commission as well as the zoning board of appeals are now by statute required to take commissioner training. Um, I believe that for anybody who didn't do the commissioner trainings that have already happened this year, I actually. Not sure anybody was available to attend the March all-day session that. Yeah, it was very quickly, you did, you both did that. At eight hours Saturday. Yeah, eight hours Saturday in March, some of you went to the, um, May or May, at the same time I was signing people up for the. Um. Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies. Thursday night thing that is always at AquaTurf, so some people went to that. The, and actually it was odd this year, it was substantially, um, planning and zoning commission because they didn't have a conflicting meeting, most years it's mostly ZBA because P N Z has conflicting meeting, this year it was the opposite, it was the first year I'd been there with. Mission members instead of board members, however, there is a requirement or timing, anyone who has taken training. If you can submit that to me so that I know what the training is that you, so we can have the reporting done. And anyone else, we, I am trying to distribute when I get notices of. Um, training opportunities, a lot of them are online and Polly just handed out one list that fairly recently came out. They, um, some of them will be, some of them are in person, sometimes they're in another town. The regional agencies clear, um, some of the, um, organiza- other organizations. You know, every commissioner in the state has to take them. So there's a lot of people that are trying to figure out how you can take them, the first part of the sheet is unfortunately it wasn't. You know, gotten that early, but there's the second page, the other, on the other side, there's additional. Um, so keep them and keep alert for our emails that may come through as to other opportunities. Remember how many hours it is? Training hours? I know one of the training hours has to be in affordable housing. Um, I don't remember the total training hours, I'll have to, I'll send.
Was that it's got you, it's got you everything you need. That's why I did it, so I think the 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 requirement might be like that eight hours.
I don't think it's a full eight, I think it's something less than that, it, I think it's reasonably less than that, but that included the modules that you need for. There's affordable housing and another one, it might be epic. I believe it's for two years. But once you make it. I believe the training is once every two years. No, I I have to check, I'll send out an email to follow up, but I did find that in.
You're right, it's less than eight, but it's more than four. Okay. It's like, yeah.
I want to say it might be four, but I I again, I'm sorry, I just don't remember off the top of my head. So those have been handed out and you also got your newsletter from the Connecticut Federation that was handed out, so that's. That's my mission of business or my staff business under commission business.
Yeah, let me know what the next sources are because I will not be available. Any of the courses.
I'll I'll try to, I'll do do another search, we'll, we'll work together and just search what.
He said that back in June.
No, he said his last year and the year before.
I'm not sure. Started.
Your elections come around, that's when he.
As I first met him, he was like, you want to take over, I want to retire. He just, he's just, nice to meet you.
Just reminded him, he just reminded him when he saw that thing from nineteen ninety-eight that had his name on it.
Twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, right.
Your your appointments to through January of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah. What?
Commenting. Your your appointment.
All right, well. We don't have a minute.
Well, I I just found your email, you're right, uh.
They must be doing some type of dealer's license for about forty cars. Man, they're probably shouldn't do that.
Well, it's a car wash.
But are you selling cars?
Uh, yeah, because I've seen dealers like some cars.
So they get, they're not supposed.
Where are you?
Uh, car wash across from Pasca.
On Woodlawn?
Which one?
On Woodlawn.
Yeah. I I noticed that recently, there's like, like forty cars.
And I'll bet you it's the same ones, but have we approved in that small part on this?
No.
No, it's not the same.
No, it's a different, it's different people and they. Have approached us. To. The process to obtain a dealer's license. And I. We've pointed out some concerns. So, but I have not seen an application. We did not realize. Harding.
Harding Street, right across the street from. Where Rod's gonna have his. There is a petition. And a. Detail shop that details. He's running about ten or twelve cars through dealers that he's selling, really.
He had an endorsement with him a couple of years ago, that's the reoccurring.
With the same.
Well, he, he applied for a dealer's license and it got denied.
Okay, I wasn't sure whether he actually got that far, I knew he wasn't allowed to do it.
Definitely selling cars out of you. Are you making a complaint? Yeah, I actually am because I pay a lot for my own. Yeah. I pay a lot for my insurance right across the street where they.
Where's that?
Harding Avenue? Right across from where he's gonna have his school.
My my, literally, my friend owns.
Oh, yeah, he's a, he's a guy.
Yeah, no, 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 he, but like he had to come up with like a. Oh, yeah.
I make a motion to close this meeting.
Shows nothing.
Yeah, no motion flows. Bye.
All right, now, give give a jabber.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.